To mute themselves and the clerk will call the roll.
All right, Alder Foster. Alder Foster is present, Alder Furman.
Present.
Alder Furman is present, Alder Harrington McKinney.
I'm present.
Alder Harrington McKinney is present, Alder Heck.
Present.
Alder Heck is present, Alder Hennick.
Present.
Alder Hennick is present, Alder Campbell.
Here.
Alder Campbell is present, Alder Lemmer. Alder Lemmer. She was here.
Here, sorry.
Alder Lemmer is present, Alder Martin.
Here.
Alder Martin is present, Alder Morland.
Here.
Alder Morland is present, Alder Prestigiacomo.
Thank you, I'm here.
Present, Alder Rummel.
Present.
Alder Rummel is present, Alder Skidmore.
Here.
Alder Skidmore is present, Alder Tierney.
Here.
Alder Tierney is present, Alder Verveer.
Here.
Alder Verveer is present, Alder Abbas.
Here.
Alder Abbas is present, Alder Alboras. Alder Balday. Alder Balday.
Yes.
Alder Balday is present, Alder Bidar.
Here.
Alder Bidar is present, Alder Carter.
Present.
Alder Carter is present, and Alder Evers.
Here.
Alder Evers is present, Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, uh, who is doing the honors with the instructions tonight?
Uh, I will.
Thank you, Joe.
Welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. The chair, clerk, and tech facilitator are responsible for muting and onmuting committee members. Use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. During any roll call, all panelists will be unmuted briefly. Staff, click raise hand when you are asked a question. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the board, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. All right, Alder Carter, we will start with suspension of the rules.
Suspend rules 2.04 Order of Business, 2.05 Introduction of Business, 2.24 Ordinances, and 2.25 Resolutions for Items So Designated on the Agenda.
Vice President Abbas.
Second.
Moved and seconded to suspend the rules. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of suspension of the rules? If so, please use the raise hand function now. Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of suspending those rules. And we'll move to Agenda Item Number One. President Carter.
Thank you. Move, move adoption of Item 159355, proclaiming Sunday, June 28, 2020, as World Migratory Bird Day in the City of Madison.
Vice President Abbas.
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt Alder Heck.
Thank you, Mayor. Proclaiming Sunday, June 28, 2020, as World Migratory Bird Day in the City of Madison. Whereas migratory birds are some of the most and easily observed wildlife that share our communities. And whereas many citizens recognize and welcome migratory songbirds as symbolic harbingers of spring. And whereas these migrant species also play an important economic role in our community, controlling insect pests and generating millions in recreational dollars statewide. And whereas migratory birds and their habitats are declining throughout the Americas, facing a growing number of threats on their migration routes and in both their summer and winter homes. And whereas public awareness and concern are crucial components of migratory bird conservation. And whereas citizens enthusiastic about birds, informed about the threats they face, and empowered to help address those threats can directly contribute to maintaining healthy bird populations. And whereas since 1993, World Migratory Bird Day, formerly International Migratory Bird Day, has become a primary vehicle for focusing public attention on the nearly 350 species that travel between nesting habitats in our communities and throughout North America and their wintering grounds in South and Central America, Mexico, the Caribbean, and the Southern U.S. And whereas hundreds of thousands of people will observe WMBD gathering virtually as needed in town squares, community centers, schools, parks, nature centers, and wildlife refugees to learn about birds, take action to conserve them, and simply to have fun. And whereas, while WMBD officially is held each year on the second Saturday in May, its observance is not limited to a single day. And planners are encouraged to schedule activities on the dates best suited to the presence of both migrants and celebrants. And whereas on Sunday, June 28, 2020, Madison Parks and community partners will hold the 8th Annual Bird and Nature Festival at Warner Park to celebrate and educate the public about birds, their habitats, and the wider ecosystem of which they are a part. Now for, therefore, be resolved that June 28, 2020, be proclaimed as World Migratory Bird Day in the City of Madison to urge all citizens to celebrate this observance and to support efforts to protect and conserve migratory birds and their habitats in our community and the world at large. And be it further resolved that WMBD is not only a day to foster appreciation for wild birds and to celebrate and support migratory conservation, but also a call to action to protect their habitat.
Thank you, Alder. I see that Alder Furman has some not-so-migratory birds with him today. Um, is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of this item? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of this item. And that will take us to Item Number Two. President Carter.
Move adoption of Item Number Two, 60441, honoring the life and work of Malali Chikasa Anna and recognizing her impact on the City of Madison.
Vice President Abbas.
Second to the adoption.
Thank you. President Carter.
Whereas Ms. Malali Chikana Anana passed away on Wednesday, May 6, 2020, at the age of 86. And whereas Ms. Malali served as the editor and publisher of Yemosia Magazine for almost three decades, launching the publication in 1990 to celebrate and promote the achievement and celebrations of African-Americans in Madison. And whereas she was the first African-American to serve on the Wisconsin School Board, elected to serve on the Madison Metropolitan School Board in 1974. And whereas she later, she was later appointed as the city's first affirmative action officer from 1975 to 1978, and later appointed Acting Equal Opportunities Executive Director from 1992 to 1993. And whereas during her tenure with the city, she worked diligently to overcome the strong opposition she encountered from enforcing compliance with city policies and contributed significantly to the city by increasing diversity, employment opportunities, and contracts for minority and women-owned businesses. And whereas during her time with the city, she founded the Minority Affairs Committee, currently known as the Multicultural Affairs Committee, that worked to increase cultural awareness and promote the importance of diversity in Madison by creating an environment that actively recruits and retain diverse employee talent. And whereas though she never, though through, she served our community in many official roles, she was most known as Ms. Malali or Mother Malali, offering her iron varnish advice and wisdom while challenging longstanding prejudices in our community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the common council of the City of Madison express their condolences to the family of Malali Chikana Anna and their deep respect, admiration, and gratitude for the many significant contributions she made to improve the quality of life for all Madisonians.
Thank you, President Carter. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, is there any objection if I speak from the chair on this?
No.
Seeing, thank you, President Carter. I just want to say that, um, we, our community has lost a giant. And, um, Ms. Malali's work, um, was incredible. Her influence, her impact on our community was incredible. And, and her work is not done, um, either here inside of City Hall nor outside of City Hall. And when someone like Ms. Malali passes, I hope that we all feel, um, the obligation, but also the inspiration to pick up pieces of the work and carry it forward. And I send deep condolences to her family and, and to our entire community because it is, I think, a loss uh, for our entire city. And Alder Harrington McKinney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I also would like to speak, uh, on behalf of Malali. Um, during those last days, Malali made the decision to, that she was tired. Um, she said herself, is that, "I'm tired and I'm ready to go." And so it took family members and friends a while to accept that. But she chose to, um, to do what she did. And in the end, her mind was sharp and she was really thinking about the work, loving her community, and just asking people to move forward. So it is with sadness that we miss her. But Madam Mayor, you're absolutely correct is that she left the community and she said that we must take care of that community. When I first came to Madison, Malali wrote an article about my son, he had just passed. It was the most touching, insightful, incredibly, um, moving account of Mike and the city. No one has ever written about my son the way she did. She had, she was a mastery of words. Um, she, you needed to get out of her way and don't be in her way, but she was a master at words. And she loved this community. Um, so there will be a hole that, uh, she's created. But she's challenged us even to the end with such a sharp mind. Her body, though her body was failing, her mind was incredibly sharp at the age of 88. And she challenged us to carry on. And so, um, thank you for the resolution, um, and, um, acknowledging the work that she's done in this city.
Thank you, Alder Harrington McKinney. All right, seeing no further discussion, is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of this item? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of this item. And, uh, Madam Clerk, I'll note that Alder Alboras has joined us. And President Carter will move on to Item Number Three.
Move adoption of 60465, commending, honoring, and expressing appreciation to Michael P. May, City Attorney, on his retirement from the City of Madison after 16 years of service.
Vice President Abbas.
Second to adopt.
Thank you. Alder Verveer.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my privilege to read this resolution commending, honoring, and expressing appreciation to Michael P. May, City Attorney, on his retirement from the City of Madison after 16 years of service. Although unorthodox, allow me to begin by reciting the fiscal note. This resolution honors Michael P. May for his service to the City of Madison as City Attorney. While this resolution includes no appropriation, it does reference the naming of a conference room, which may create incidental costs for the Office of City Attorney due to various signage requirements and enlargements of pictures of Attorney May and various regalia, including wizard paraphernalia and homages to Irish cultural dress customs. Research has shown that Attorney May loves the law, which has had some fiscal effect on the city over the past 16 years beyond quantifiable. And stems from his immersion in the philosophy of the 1960s and 70s, including such notions as love is free. These notions have been discounted as sophistry in recent years. Yet Attorney May has remained steadfast in his love for the law. Some of Attorney May's other more parochial efforts included development of an ordinance around the questionable remembrance of the pronunciation of a street name from his childhood, which resulted in some additional costs to the city to change various announcements on city buses. These costs are, again, interme- indeterminate in service to love of the law. Given the above, this resolution has no fiscal effect, and in sum, Attorney May, his service to the city and his love of the law are priceless. Whereas Mike was appointed City Attorney by Mayor Dave Chislevich and started employment with the City of Madison on May 17, 2004. And whereas Mike is often quoted as saying, "I love the law." And whereas Mike has staffed over 360 common council meetings during his tenure, which equates to a little over one year of his life in council chambers, Mike loves the law. And whereas currently, Mike is helping to lead the City of Madison through the COVID-19 pandemic by answering countless legal questions on how the City of Madison can protect and assist its citizens, government officials, and City of Madison employees through this crisis. And whereas Mike spent countless hours researching, giving legal advice, and attending long common council meetings on important City of Madison issues such as the Overture Center, smoking ban, minimum wage law, and how city committees should best operate, Mike loves the law. And whereas one council meeting in particular, while the smoking ban was being considered, Mike was returning from the meeting while the rest of the office staff were arriving for work in the morning. Mike still loved the law. And whereas Mike May was successful in passing an ordinance in Madison in 2013, requiring city employees to pronounce Rosa Road properly, Rosé Road. And whereas Mike has an avid interest in Richard Nixon and delighted in sharing various Nixon milestones and trivia with his staff. And whereas Mike set an excellent example for pursuing employee engagement activities, including annual outings to the Madison Mallards, other sporting events. And when held outside of work time, it was not unusual to see an invitation for libations. And whereas Mike expanded and improved the law clerk program, including the Diversity Clerkship Program, providing opportunities and mentoring for law students to also learn to love the law. This included meet-the-attorney pizza lunches, after-work libations, and directives to include the law clerks in our actual practice of the law by inviting them to observe depositions, trials, administrative hearings, et cetera. And whereas Mike's non-vegan coworkers will greatly miss the bag of cheese curds that Mike purchased every Wednesday from April through November and unceremoniously deposited on the table in the break room for all to enjoy. And whereas Mike grew the reserves in the Office of City Attorney Coffee Fund and scrupulously audited the account, sometimes discovering non-legal tender and miscellaneous foreign currency, dutifully reporting the result of the audit to the office and purchasing new coffee supplies with the saying. And whereas Mike had been known to remind us each year that St. Patrick was a lawyer. And whereas Mike regaled his staff with stories of attending the Rose Bowl, the Frozen Four, and his annual trip to a new location to attend a college rivalry football game. The office was privy to photos of Mike decked out in his full Badger gear, our favorite being the Celt and tan hat reserved for the most important games. See Exhibit A in attachments. And whereas Mike demonstrated time and time again that he truly loved the law, he kept abreast of case law updates, researched and educated himself on the areas of law he was not so familiar with, although those seemed to be very few and far between. And always with enthusiasm left no stone unturned in answering legal questions and quandaries submitted to him. Mike provided exceptional legal service to the city. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the common council of the City of Madison hereby commends and thanks City Attorney Michael P. May for his years of dedicated professional legal service to the City of Madison, its elected officials, employees, and residents. And be it further resolved that the common council congratulates Michael P. May on the occasion of his retirement, wishing him and his family well in all of their future endeavors. And be it finally resolved that the staff of the Office of City Attorney are directed to name the conference room in Room 401 as the Michael P. May Conference Room, to forever enshrine that space with the memory of his service, dedication, and love of the law.
Thank you, Alder. We have a number of registrants on this item, none of whom wish to speak, all of whom are in support. And so I will read their names and they will sound very familiar to you. Patricia Lawton, John Strange, Amber McReynolds, Kevin Ramakrishna, Marcy Paulson, Derek Shuld, Brittany Wilson, Jennifer Zilivi, Jean Phelps, Roger Allen, Doran Vest, Kate Smith, Diane Althaus, Adriana Peguero, and Laura Manella. All in support, not wishing to speak. Alder Verveer, I imagine that you have something to say about this.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, you are very correct. Let me begin by sharing with my colleagues that I had the fortune to meet Attorney May, also known as Bo, AKA The Monsignor, more about that later, when he was appointed our City Attorney in 2004. As I was council president at the time, Mayor Dave Chislevich privately discussed a search with me on several occasions. Ultimately, Mayor Dave said a boardman partner was a top candidate among a group of very qualified finalists. I quickly learned why. If anything, Mayor Dave understated Mike's talents and abilities in those conversations with me. Mike was a godsend. He was a great fit in our organization. 16 years later, having outlasted the tenure of most alders and mayors, Mike will depart City Hall with a tremendous legacy. He leaves a top-notch professional staff, most of whom he hired to his successor, our next City Attorney, also named Mike. The office was in a bit of disarray for the couple of years prior to Mike's arrival. We had a revolving door of city attorneys at the time. The office did not have the full confidence of elected officials and city staff. Mike changed all that and did so with the highest degree of professionalism. He quickly restored our confidence, indeed our faith, in our attorney-client relationship. Mike is an exceptional lawyer. He advised and defended the City of Madison as an organization with zeal for 16 years. Mike was reappointed three times as City Attorney by three different mayors and reconfirmed by three different common councils. No small feat for such a challenging position. Yes, indeed, Attorney May loves the law. The Honoring Resolution, including the very clever fiscal note, was obviously drafted with great affection and respect by Mike's office colleagues. We all recall the outpouring of support by current and former office staff for Mike's contract renewal last summer. He has managed the office with great skill and fostered a sense of camaraderie that made the office a great place to work. He prioritized diversity in hiring. He will obviously be terribly missed by his coworkers. Their request of us to name their modest conference room after him as a lasting tribute is a beautiful gesture. Perhaps someday Room 401 will receive a long overdue renovation and remodeling, including a proper Michael P. May Conference Room. Not only is Mike a wickedly smart attorney and an excellent manager, but he is, his free-spirited nature and well-established sense of humor served him well in our challenging and stressful environment. Believe it or not, most lawyers, myself included, aren't exactly known for their sense of humor. Perhaps especially so government lawyers. Whether it was his Jerry Garcia neckties, Hawaiian shirts purchased annually at Maxwell Street Days, or dressing as a wizard at the council meeting closest to Halloween each year, Mike easily brought a smile to one's face. His comments often provided some much-needed levity during council meetings. By the way, Mike always impressed me with his multitasking during our council meetings. At most every meeting, he would very obviously be catching up on professional periodicals, such as the ABA Journal, municipal lawyer, the urban lawyer, or Wisconsin lawyer. But usually without missing a beat, he would be able to immediately respond to any form of question by an alder or mayor. By the way, his multitasking sometimes included simultaneously closely following both our meeting and Badger basketball games. He can recite Robert's Rules of Order in Latin on demand. Discussions between mayors and Mike over parliamentary procedure was a source of entertainment during many meetings. And Mike certainly doesn't consider Latin to be a dead language. General Henry Robert and Mike's teachers at Holy Name Seminary High School would be proud. Speaking of Holy Name Seminary, Mike was a valedictorian of his class, but apparently didn't feel the calling to enter the priesthood. Nonetheless, he is known as The Monsignor by many, especially his fellow Badger fans in the online Badger Board community. You see Mike as a regular in those forums where his signature is, "Bless the Badgers." His personal email address and personalized license plates also reflect his seminary days. Go figure, but I'm confident that Monsignor May is the only pillar of First Unitarian society to own a Monsignor's beretta. As you know, Mike is a Badger fan extraordinaire. UW Homecoming is celebrated with gusto every year at the May Boy Home. He rarely misses a football or hockey game and travels the country attending most Badger Bowl games. Exhibit A is Mike's attire at the last Rose Bowl, if I recall correctly. I always enjoy reading his bowl or rivalry game journals. Mike and Brian Efoy are also regulars at the NCAA Frozen Four Hockey Championship each year, regardless of the teams or the venue. On a personal note, I'll miss Mike very much. I'll miss the annual reminder each August 9 of Richard "I am not a crook" Nixon's resignation day. As Mike says, "A great day for America." And each September 29 of our Joint Feast Day, St. Michael the Archangel. Perhaps the next City Attorney Michael will continue the Feast Day tradition, but I would be surprised if he does so. I'll miss Mike's quick wit, for example, reciting the Sherman Antitrust Act via email to entertain ourselves during a recent Marathon Council meeting. Although I know that he won't miss the marathon meetings, be it the budget, Edgewater redevelopment, F-35 jet bed down, tavern smoking ban, or any other matter. However, Mike will miss contributing to the community achievements, like the proper pronunciation of Rosé Road, or should I say Charles Rosé Road, and preserving the legality of the Oscar Mayer Wienermobile on our streets. You see the Wienermobile is present with Mike as we speak. Enjoy your well-deserved retirement. Michael Patrick May. Although you are now Medicare eligible, given your well-established love of the law, I know that you will continue to practice in some form the law that you love so dearly. I'm happy that you'll be able to spend more quality time, especially on Tuesday evenings, with the love of your life, your partner, Brian E. And have more opportunities to enjoy your three kids and beautiful toddler granddaughter B. Not to mention your gardens that need tending, as you always remind us. I hope to see you and Brian E at Friar Park for years to come. Godspeed, Monsignor. Congratulations on the job. Very well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Verveer. Is there additional discussion? It's seeing none. It's hard to top that, but let me just add my thanks uh, to Attorney May for his years of service, uh, to our city and wish him the best in his retirement. And I believe you saw, but you got a virtual round of applause, uh, from the council and are now getting another one. All right, seeing no further discussion, it's been moved and seconded. You have to get this right by Robert's rules, considering who it's honoring. Uh, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of Item Number Three? Seeing no objection, we will record a unanimous vote in favor of Item Number Three. Seeing no objection, we will record a unanimous vote in favor of item number three. And we'll move on to item number four, President Carter.
Move adoption of 60497, recognizing the contributions of Diane Altous as she retires after nineteen years as ordinance revision specialist and assistant in the Office of the City Attorney.
Vice President Abbas.
Second to adopt.
Thank you both. Alder Viver.
Thank you, Mayor. And it's also my privilege to read this honoring resolution, recognizing the contributions of Diane Altous as she retires after nineteen years as ordinance revision specialist and assistant in the Office of the City Attorney. Whereas, for the last nineteen years, Diane Altous has served as the city's ordinance specialist and assistant, responsible for maintaining four volumes, forty-five chapters, and hundreds, if not thousands, of amendments to the Madison General Ordinance. And whereas Diane's service to alders and staff alike and commitment and attention to detail have provided an immeasurable contribution to the City of Madison. And whereas through her role as the ordinance revision specialist, Diane's contributions include, but are not limited to, subsection A, responding to requests from attorneys, alders, committee chairs, and staff, frequently on very short deadlines; subsection B, keeping everyone on task with such short deadlines, always producing an excellent work product despite the demands of such deadlines; subsection C, discovering and correcting typographical errors within existing ordinances and ensuring formatting and syntax consistency; sub D, educating countless city staff about the ordinance amendment and legislative procedures of the city; and sub E, most recently presiding over the implementation of an online ordinance service, which included the grueling task of proofreading the entire code of ordinances for conversion to the online format, remaining ever vigilant to ensure the online version and quarterly updates to the Madison General Ordinances is published in a timely and accurate manner. Whereas Diane has blessed the Office of City Attorney with some of the best home-baked food, whether a trendy and tasteful new appetizer, dessert baked on demand, or one of her expert dishes prepared for an office potluck party, Diane's cooking will be surely missed. And whereas Diane has maintained extremely high standards and expects the same of others, all in the name of ensuring the Madison General Ordinances are the best that they can be. And whereas Diane is a person who truly cares about others, her coworkers, other city staff, and the Wisconsin Badgers, Diane always has time, or makes time, to connect, to relate to others. Whereas Diane's contributions cannot be measured, and we cannot thank her enough for her service to the city and her contributions to the City Attorney's Office. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Office of the City Attorney, Mayor, and Common Counsel of the City of Madison express their sincere appreciation to Diane Altous for her years of dedicated service and congratulate her on her retirement.
Thank you, Alder. We have a number of registrants on this item as well, also all in support, none of them wishing to speak. Again, familiar names, Patricia Lawton, Amber McReynolds, John Strange, Kevin Ramakrishna, Marcy Paulson, Derek Shuld, Brittany Wilson, Jennifer Zillevi, Jean Phelps, Roger Allen, Doran Vestig, Kate Smith, Adriana Peguero, and Laura Manella. Alder Viver.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution is a little tougher, and I'll explain why for me. First, I should say at the outset that Diane absolutely deserves congratulations for a job very well done, just as her former boss, Mike May. It actually would be more appropriate for this to be in the form of an ordinance, albeit a non-codified one with all city attorneys listed as the drafters, because that's what Diane did day in and day out for us. Diane is a very special person. I know that some of my newer colleagues do not have the opportunity to work closely with her, as I did, but you missed out, is all I can tell you. To give you a couple of examples, and I certainly hope Diane is watching, and I think she is since she registered in honor of her former boss. Diane, thank you. You're welcome. That's our inside joke. For years and years, you see, Diane and I would correspond by email or in the hallways on the fourth floor and thank one another for something, in Diane's case, actually doing real work; in my case, simply approving an ordinance amendment, or finding some very rare editing issue that I perhaps should be addressed. And we would always mutually thank one another and then also mutually say you're welcome to the point that, of course, it'd be ridiculous, where we had emails back and forth saying, "Thank you, you're welcome, thank you, you're welcome." Diane, I miss that very much, especially when we'd say it in person. We also had another inside joke between ourselves and Assistant City Attorney Laura Manella, and I know that Attorney May was in on this one, and that is that we talked for years and years and years about merging our city's vending rules with our city's vending ordinance, section 9.13. Well, sadly, Diane left before we were able to get that job accomplished. Perhaps I'll continue to seek reelection until we get that one done, but that's another inside joke that Diane and I shared for many years, because that would have been quite a monumental task, merging those two documents. Diane was an exceptional worker, and there's just no two ways about that. The reason why, though, I have to share with all of you that this is a little more difficult for me is you see, unlike Monsignor May, or I should say Attorney May, Diane did not really retire by choice. You see, she was dealt a very rough health diagnosis earlier this year, and she chose to retire so that she could devote all of her strength and energy to fighting this health challenge that is before her. So, it's hard for me to sugarcoat this. I can't sugarcoat it, because I know Diane is fighting a real battle right now, and I'm sure that she's fighting it with everything she's got. I know that she's applying the same diligence and effort and strength to this battle for her life as she did her job all those many years for us. So Diane, know that I think of you daily. I keep you in my prayers. And know that on behalf of all of us on the council, we're all sending our collective best wishes and thoughts to you during this difficult time. I'm giving you a virtual hug right now. I feel awful that I was out of town the first week in March when you had your last days in the office, and I wasn't able to say goodbye to you at the time in person, and I really regret that. I missed doing so. So know that I, again, think of you all the time, and I'm keeping you in my daily prayers, and we all are. So, thank you once again for all of your excellent service to the people of our community, to all of us individually, and know, again, as I say, that we're all thinking of you collectively during this difficult time. Best wishes, and Godspeed to you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Balday.
So, I was just wondering, Mayor, if it is in order for some of these retirees like Mike May and others to share a word or two with the council, as opposed to just voting and letting them go? They probably have something that they would like to say, so if that is in order, I would suggest that they at least say something.
It's absolutely in order, but it's completely up to them.
All right.
So, I don't believe that Diane is in attendance with us as a panelist. She may be viewing, but I believe that Attorney May, as usual, would be happy to speak.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Attorney May?
Thank you all. I want to start by echoing the words that Alder Viver said about Diane Altous. She was one of my finest employees, and I keep her in mind all the time. I did actually have a few things to say, and borrowing a well-known introduction from my good friend Alder Viver, I promise to be very brief. You may not know this, but I love the law, and the only other thing that excites me more than that is that having a conference room named after me means that from now on, when people in our office want to get together for a meeting, they'll be able to say, "Well, let's meet in May." And so I think we'll be hearing that around the office a lot. Thank you a lot. I appreciated the kind words. I'm not going to try and thank all of you. I ask that my letter announcing my resignation be put in the record, because I did a lot of thanks there, and that'll be there for all time. But there are a few people who I do need to spell out in particular. First are all the people from the Office of the City Attorney. These are just wonderful professional staff who I agree to be friendly with. They work hard, they're diligent. To the extent I was able to provide good service to you, it was because of them. So I thank them profoundly for everything they did all the years. I'm really going to miss them. I also need to thank, and you need to step into the picture here, my wife, Brian E. Foy. She's right here, love of my life, most important person to me, and the deepest love of my life. I couldn't have done this without her. Finally, I want to do a thank you to another person. This is the person that my sister correctly described as not the deepest love of my life, but probably the most constant love, and that's the City of Madison. I've never been able to leave her, even though I had a lot of opportunities to do it. And what I want to remind you of here today is that we really have a jewel in this city. It's a wonderful, wonderful place, and it's our task to continue to shine that jewel and to burnish it and make it so that it shines for everybody in the city, all of us. I was kind of lucky. I was born in this great city. I was able to get great jobs here, but I had some advantages. I was born white. I was born male. I'm heterosexual. I don't have any disabilities. And what I want to remind you of tonight is that, you know, you have to make that jewel shine, not just for people like me who have those advantages, but for people who aren't white, or aren't male, or aren't heterosexual, or do have disabilities. Those are the kind of people that we need to keep in mind, and I hope you keep that jewel shining for all of us. You all have huge tasks ahead of you, not the least of which is COVID, but everything else, I don't envy what you have to do. I'm not going to feel bad that I won't have to be there to help you out on it, at least not too bad. I have faith that you're going to make Madison shine for everyone. So thank you. I loved working with all of you, and even after sixteen years, I still love the law.
Thank you, Attorney May. Seeing... Oh, excellent. Somebody get a screenshot of that. Seeing no further discussion. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of item number four? See no objection, so we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item number four and congratulate both our retirees. And move on to item number five, President Carter.
60519, commending, honoring, and expressing appreciation to Natalie Erdman for her six months of exemplary service to the City of Madison as interim general manager for Metro Transit.
Vice President Abbas.
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt, and I have the honor of reading this resolution. Whereas Natalie Erdman has tirelessly served the City of Madison for many years, most recently as Director of Planning, Community, and Economic Development; and whereas Natalie graciously agreed to serve as interim Metro Transit General Manager in November of 2019; and whereas Natalie had no idea of the unprecedented changes Metro Transit was about to experience, including reduced routing, suspension of fare collection, significant budget challenges, and ensuring employee safety; and whereas Natalie's professionalism and experience as a public manager instilled confidence in Metro Transit staff guiding the agency through unsettling times; and whereas Metro Transit remains a critical service for many Madison residents, getting essential workers to jobs and residents to services and groceries, and Natalie's leadership has helped maintain this service; and whereas Natalie fully deserves a second retirement, having accumulated ten years of transit experience in a mere six months; and whereas the City of Madison continues its indebtedness to Natalie for her service over the decades. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and common counsel of the City of Madison express their sincere appreciation to Natalie Erdman for her additional contribution as interim general manager for Metro Transit, providing an essential service to many during extremely challenging times. And I want to add my personal thanks to Natalie for saying yes to a job that I promised her would be easy and turned out to not actually be easy at all, and nonetheless, she served with grace, and I am deeply grateful to her. We do also, yes, a round of applause for Natalie. We do also have one registrant, Patricia Lawton, in support, not wishing to speak. Is there... Are there any alders that wish to speak? If not, I will put the spotlight on Natalie and see if she would like to share anything
All I have to say is that Mike May is a tough act to follow resolutions, and resolution honoring resolution was not necessary. It was an honor to serve, and as much as I looked forward to taking the job, I'm also now looking forward to returning to retirement. So thank you for the opportunity. I too love the City of Madison.
Thank you, Natalie. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item number five? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item number five and send our thanks again to Natalie. And Alder Carter, that will bring us to the consent agenda.
Thank you. At this time, the consent agenda will be moved with the recommendation, recommended actions listed for each item except: 1. Items which have registrants wishing to speak; 2. Items which require extraordinary roll call vote and are not included on the consent agenda by unanimous consent; 3. Items which alder persons have separated out for discussion/debate purposes.
All right, and for tonight's consent agenda, we have items six through eleven as public hearing items. We have a confirmation hearing, item number sixteen. We have a number of extra-majority items. President Carter, would you like to read those?
Yes. The following items are extra-majority items. Extra-majority vote items will be recorded as unanimous votes unless a roll call or exclusion is requested. Number 24, Legis 60219, amending the 2020 Engineering Major Street Capital Budget Transfer 510,000 of Existing Geo-Warring Authority Between Major Projects Monroe Street and Major Program Citywide Flood Mitigation and Award Public Works Contract 8536 McKenna Boulevard Flood Mitigation Phase II Report of Finance Report a finance committee, 15 votes required. Legis star 60291, item 26, amending the 2020 adopted operating budget to transfer 152,900 in salaries and benefits from DPCED, Office of the Director of Planning Division, and transferring three positions of administrative clerk, one from the DPCED Office of the Director of the Planning Development. Report to finance, 15 votes required. Item 28, 60335, amending the 2020 operating budget of the Police Department, accepting a U.S. Department of Justice coronavirus and emergency supplemental funding grant award of 279,128 to fund unbudgeted COVID-19 response supplies and equipment. Item number 32, 60383, substitute, amending the Public Health Madison Dane County operating budget to appropriate 700,000 to increase staff due to the COVID-19 health emergency and add funding to assist persons who are required to quarantine due to a positive COVID test, COVID-19 test. Item number 33, 60384, substitute, amending the 2020 operating, 2020 adopted operating budget to transfer 350,000 from the city contingent reserve to the clerk's office for supplies and to transfer 355,000 within the direct appropriation from the contingent reserve to supply for COVID-19 related costs. Should I go on?
Yes, Alder, we do have a registrant on item 14, so that will be on the list for exclusion.
Okay, I'll read it when I get to the exclusion list, if you don't mind.
That's fine.
These are agenda items, part of the consent agenda with additional recommendations as noted. Item 25, 60249, substitute, authorizing the exclusion of the two-year lease agreement between the City of Madison and Watson Smith LLC for the city's lease of the property located at 4502 Milwaukee Street for temporary shelter purposes, with the option to purchase the property at the end of a two-year lease. Report a finance committee, Alder Foster, District 15, recommend action, refer to June 2nd, 2020 Common Council Meeting. And number 52, 60499, amending the 2020 adopted operating budget to transfer 89,032 in salary and benefits from the Information Technology Department to the mayor's office, creating a new classification of communication coordinator in CG 18 R12 and recreating vacant position 449 of IT Specialist III as a communications coordinator within the mayor's office operating budget. This is a new referral, Alder Foster, additional referral, President's Work Group on the communication tool and process. Items for exclusion, I'm going back to item 14, 60514, report of the mayor submitting alder committee appointments, recommend action, confirm substitute, but that is now on the exclusion list. Number 12, 60412, confirming the mayor emergency order number two in providing COVID-19 response for people experiencing unsheltered homelessness by allowing temporary use of city lands terminal at any time by city in order to support safe outdoor spaces. This has been referred to the City County Homeless Issue Committee. And item 30, 60368, directing 80,000 of municipal art fund tours art in public places. And this is the purpose of submitting an amendment.
All right, thank you, Alder Carter. Are there any other items for exclusion? Let's see, a number of hands. Alder Furman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like item 52 separated. I have some questions for the city attorney about the referral.
Item 52 will be separated. Thank you, Alder. Vice President Abbas.
Yeah, I might be wrong. I thought legislative, agenda number 25, legislative five, number 60249, I thought Alder Foster sent an email to exclude that one and referred it, I believe. I have to check his email.
The recommended action is to re-refer to the next council meeting?
Yep. Okay.
I don't see Alder Foster chiming in, so I'll assume that's his intent.
Yep, thank you. That makes sense. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Are there any other alders wishing to exclude items? Can I just check Alder Rumel? Alder Rumel, did you wish to discuss item 12 or just to add an additional referral?
To add an additional referral.
Is there any objection to having item 12 on the consent agenda with that additional referral? Alder Hennig, is that an objection? Okay, so seeing no objection, we'll have item 12 on the consent agenda with the additional referral to the City County Homeless Issues Committee. Thank you, Alder. And then Alder Bedar, on item 30, you submitted a substitute which the lead sponsor has agreed to. Did you wish to discuss or to move that on the consent agenda?
I was comfortable with it being on the consent agenda, but I believe President Carter wanted it to be excluded.
President Carter, did you wish to discuss item 30?
Yes, I do want to discuss item 30. I just have a quick question, too.
Absolutely. We'll take that, leave that on the exclusion list. Alder Hennig.
Yes, I was just asking to be added as a sponsor to item number 17, 60515.
We'll add you as a sponsor to item number 17. Thank you, Alder. Is there any other requests for exclusion? Alder Rumel?
I would like to be added to number 17. I thought I asked Lisa in the office to add my name, but I don't see it on my screen.
Thank you. The clerk will make sure that you've been added, Alder.
Thank you.
Any other requests for exclusion? Or are there any disclosures or recusals on any items on the consent agenda? Alder Balday.
I would like to be added as a sponsor on item 17.
Alder Balday on item 17 as well. Thank you, Alder. Any additional items for the consent agenda, disclosures, recusals, et cetera? All right, seeing none, then just to confirm, agenda items six through 11 are public hearing items. Agenda item number 16 is a confirmation hearing. We have a number of extra majority items for which we will record a unanimous vote. Those are 24, 26, 28, 32, and 33. I have items with additional recommendations, 14 with subs, excuse me, 14 is on the exclusion list, 25 with a re-recommended action to re-refer to the 62 council meeting, and 52 is on the exclusion list, and number 12 with the additional referral to the City County Homeless Issues Committee. Then our exclusion list is items 14, 30, and 52. Alder Alboras.
If you could also include me on agenda item 17 as well as a co-sponsor, that'd be a good idea.
Alder Alboras will be added to item number 17.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Anything else on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, President Carter has moved. Vice President Abbas, a second?
Second.
So moved and seconded for the consent agenda. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the consent agenda. Thank you all, and we will move on to our recessed public hearings. Item number six, the report of the Plan Commission. We'll open a public hearing on Legis star item 59133, which is creating sections of the MGO to change the zoning of a property at 935 West Johnson Street. And we have no registrants on item number six, so we will close that public hearing. President Carter.
Move adoption of 59133.
Moved and, and Vice President Abbas?
To adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt item number six. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item number six? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item number six. And move on to our regular public hearings and the report of the Plan Commission, item number seven, open a public hearing on Legis star 59856, creating sections of the MGO to change the zoning of a property at 2524 Winnebago Street. And we have no registrants on item number seven, so we will close that public hearing. President Carter.
Move adoption with conditions, 59856.
Vice President Abbas.
Second to adopt with conditions.
Moved and seconded to adopt with conditions. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item number seven? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item number seven, and we'll move on to item number eight, where we will open a public hearing on Legis star 60084, creating sections of the MGO to amend a planned development district at 4,000 through 488 Felon Road. And we have one registrant, Jim Hess of Yellowstone Drive, is in support, not wishing to speak, but available to answer questions. Are there any questions for our registrant? Seeing no questions, we will close that public hearing. President Carter.
Recommended to adopt with condition 6084.
Vice President Abbas.
Yes, second to adopt with condition.
Moved and seconded to adopt with conditions. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote to adopt with conditions? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote to adopt with conditions. That will take us to item nine, open a public hearing on Legis star 60089, creating sections of the MGO to change the zoning of 3040 to 3046 Commercial Avenue and 701 McCormick Avenue. And we have two registrants. Paul Kuta of Regent Street is in support, not wishing to speak but available to answer questions, representing Augusta Realty, care of Greg Shumansky, and Lucas Rowe of Mifflin Street in support and available to answer questions, also from Augusta Realty. Are there any questions for either of our registrants? All right, seeing none, we will close that public hearing. President Carter.
Move adoption.
Vice President Abbas.
Yes, second to adopt with conditions.
Moved and seconded to adopt with conditions. Is there any objection to recording unanimous favor, unanimous vote in favor of adopting with conditions? Seeing no objection, we will record a unanimous vote in favor of adoption with conditions. And move on to item number 10. We'll open a public hearing on Legis star 60242, creating sections of the MGO to change the zoning at 4728 Sheboygan Avenue. We have no registrants. We'll recess that public hearing. President Carter.
Move to refer to the public hearing to the Plan Commission, 60242.
Vice President Abbas.
Second to re-refer.
Moved and seconded to re-refer. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of re-referral? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of re-referral on item number 10. And move to item number 11, where we'll open a public hearing on Legis star 60243, creating sections of the MGO to change the zoning at 702 Gardner Lane, excuse me, Gardner Road. We have no registrants, so I will recess that public hearing. President Carter.
Move to refer to the public hearing to Plan Commission, 60243.
Vice President Abbas.
Yes, second to re-refer.
Moved and seconded to re-refer. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of re-referral? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of re-referral, and that brings us to the end of our public hearings today. And to item number 14 on our agenda. President Carter, a motion?
Yes. Move to confirm item 14, 60514, the substitute, sub, substitute. Thank you, President Carter. Vice President Abbas.
Second to confirm the substitute.
Moved and seconded to confirm. We have one registrant, Greg Jones, in opposition, wishing to speak, representing the Dane County NAACP. Is Mr. Jones with us?
Yes, he is.
Mr. Jones? Yes, go ahead, please.
Well, this is a great evening, and thanks for the opportunity to speak to this issue that has erupted in the community, particularly the African-American community. I could not forego the opportunity to speak to this issue for the following six reasons. I understand from the protocol that I have about five minutes, so I think I can do this within my timeframe. Let me begin with the text of Legislative File 6014, states, "The mayor submits the following alder committee appointments. Alder Shiva Bedar, District 5, appoint to the remainder of a two-year term to the position of common council member succeeding Alder Harrington McKinney." As I look at the mission, stated mission of the Finance Committee, it makes recommendations regarding budget amendments and other matters with significant fiscal implications during the year. This committee was renamed from the Board of Estimates to the Finance Committee a year or so ago, and also looked at your current members. But this is the message that I want to send to alders in the City of Madison, and Madison is the largest jurisdiction under the purview of the Dane County NAACP. The mayor needs to be transparent in her reason for removing Barbara McKinney from the Finance Committee and clearly articulate those reasons. She has not done this. The chosen manner to remove, to, the chosen manner to remove McKinney and replace her with another alder suggests that fairness and equitable treatment are not qualities the mayor has either mastered and certainly have not applied in this context. Three, when African-Americans work hard and rise through the ranks, only to be discounted and mistreated by those in positions of control, the old head of racism and bigotry is revealed. If the mayor wants a committee that is finance-minded, finance-focused, she should work through the committee's structured appointment process to identify- to identify and recommend appropriate people for these committees. Four, the mayor's decision and method utilized raises questions about her integrity to manage a public entity, advanced principles of equity and inclusion relative to the city's elected individuals, particularly African-Americans. And it suggests other issues are at play that have nothing to do with effective government for all citizens in the city of Madison. Five, while the decision has been made to retain Barbara McKinney on the Finance Committee, the symbolism of her removal cannot go unnoticed. There will be a stench for the city of Madison government for a while to come. And lastly, all Alders should rise to the call to action to ensure the committee appointment is cured of individual, political, and otherwise nonproductive actions. There should be a review of this event with recommendations to the public. We need a process we can believe in.
Mr. Jones, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. We have no further registrants on this item. Are there any questions for our registrant? All right, seeing none. We've moved and seconded the substitute. Is there any questions or discussion? Alder Rummel.
Someone please state what the substitute is so the viewing public knows what changes have happened today?
Alder, the substitute is to appoint Alder Harrington McKinney to the Complete Count Committee.
And the other appointment was withdrawn, correct, Mayor?
That's correct.
Thank you, just so the public knows.
Thank you, Alder. There, seeing no other discussion. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the substitute. Excuse me, to confirm the substitute. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of confirmation? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of confirmation. And that will bring us to item number sixteen. President Carter.
Yes, thank you. Item sixteen, six oh three eight five, move adoption.
Vice President Abbas?
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to confirm. On number sixteen, is there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of item number sixteen, confirming the reappointment of Janelle Heinrich as the position, to the position of Director of Public Health, Madison Dane County? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor and congratulate Ms. Heinrich. Uh, excuse me, President Carter, we wish to speak. Hold on, hold on, Alder. Uh, there we go.
The unanimous vote is fine. I just wanted to say, Janelle, I'm so happy that you are sticking with us despite the fact that you just went through. Safer at home, COVID nineteen, not safer at home, could be safer at home. We're almost safer at home. Thank you for being reappointed. You've done a fantastic job. Thank you.
Thank you, President Carter.
President Carter, if you could move your microphone back down.
Oh, so.
That's okay.
Did you get my words of wisdom, Janelle? Maybe not.
We, we did hear you, President Carter, but it was a little soft. Alder Alvarez.
Oh, I was just going to mention that I could, I was having a rough time hearing Council President Carter, but it looks like we got that fixed. But I guess I'll echo what the Council President has mentioned, that we just really appreciate everything that public health in general has been doing. So thank you so much, and I'm very much excited to have, well, obviously, if this vote goes the way it should, to have that continued leadership and expertise around public health matters. And I can't think of a better time that we're reinstituting leadership for that. So thank you.
Thank you, Alder Alvarez. All right, so it's been moved and seconded. I see no objections to recording unanimous vote. And so we will record a unanimous vote in favor of confirmation and give our collective thanks to Janelle for the incredible work that she and her staff are doing in this very trying time. And that will bring us to item number thirty. President Carter.
Yes. Move adoption of the amendment six oh three six eight.
Vice President Abbas?
Second to the adoption of amendment.
All right, so what we're properly moving is the substitute proposed by Alder Bedar and myself. And so I believe Alder Bedar, if you'd like to speak to it.
Thank you, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the support of the substitute. I'm sure that all Alders agree that we really do need to focus our public art efforts into areas of our city that are deficient in, in public art, and also make sure that we're really using our racial equity and social justice principles as we go about doing public art, which is extremely important to, to our city. And I wanted to specifically talk about the fact that we, we often say north, south, east, and, and central, but southwest, southeast, far east, far west, and different areas within that quadrant are extremely important in public art.
Thank you, Alder. And President Carter, I believe you had a question on this item.
I did have a question, but it was answered. I, I just, um, when I read it, I thought it was just the north, south, east. I was glad that Alder Bedar included all the other in-betweens. So that's, that was my question, if it would apply to those other areas. So thank you.
Thank you, President Carter. Are there, is there any other questions or discussion on this item? Vice President Abbas?
Please add my name as a cosponsor to substitute.
We'll add Vice President Abbas as a cosponsor. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? All right, seeing none. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the substitute? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the substitute on item number thirty. And that will take us to item number fifty-two. All right, President Carter, let's start with a motion.
Motion for six oh four nine nine to, with the additional referrals. To adopt with additional referrals.
To adopt with an additional referral. Vice President Abbas?
Second to adopt with additional referral.
Moved and seconded to adopt with additional referrals. Alder Furman, you requested separation.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Attorney May. I happened to, in between CCEC and the council meeting, look up when the President's Work Group on Council Communication and Tools and Processes was scheduled to be finished and discovered that, according to the legislation, I was able to find that that committee's work has only been extended by the council until March thirty-first, twenty twenty. So I'm not sure that, that committee exists and how we can refer something to that committee if it doesn't exist. But I was wanting to ask Attorney May his opinion on that.
Attorney May.
A couple of things. First, the motion was to adopt, but remember, this is just introduction for referrals. So the, the amendment was to add an additional referral, just so we understand that. But second, I'm not, I'm not certain of the status of the committee. I did see Alder Furman sent me a Legistar indication that it, it ended on the thirty-first, and you can't really refer something to a committee that's no longer in existence. Now, I don't know if there's a plan to, to re-energize that committee or whether it's still in fact working, even though the legislation says it was to end. So I, I would guess what I would suggest at this point, there's already a referral to CCEC. And perhaps between now and when it gets to CCEC, now people could figure out what the status is of the committee that by some views no longer exists. But perhaps the council or the CCEC wants it to exist, and that could be sorted out in the meantime. And I, I'm not sure that, I don't know if we want to try and figure out tonight whether it's actually out there or not. If it isn't, there's no way it can go to it. And, and I think the Executive Committee would be the best place to sort through that. That, that would be my suggestion at this point in time, unless the sponsor who suggested the additional referral wants to withdraw it.
Thank you, Attorney May. Alder Furman, is that your question?
For now, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Foster.
Thank you. So I guess I'm not sure what Alder Furman is referring to in terms of the work group being terminated. The original founding resolution created this work group, and the final, the be a final resolved clause said we'll begin work upon adoption of the resolution with the goal of completing the review and report by November fifth, number, November fifth, twenty nineteen, Common Council Executive Committee meeting. This was, I think, passed in August or September of last year. The work group had its first meeting, I believe, in October. And at our first meeting, it was clear that we were not going to finish our work within a couple of weeks, and our first report out to CCEC was that we felt like we could instead aim for a March completion of a final report. We, and CCEC, I don't even, I can't remember if there was an official action or not, but basically, there was consent that we would continue to work. I don't believe that ever went to the Common Council, and I don't believe there was any reason for it to go to the Common Council as the founding resolution itself doesn't actually terminate the, the work group at a specific date. It simply stated a, a goal for a report completion. In January and February of the work group, we were assessing our progress and the goals that we still had left in front of us. And at our last meeting pre-COVID, which was in February, there was agreement from the work group members that there was a willingness and ability to continue to meet through the end of May with prioritizing several items left in front of us. And all the members of the work group agreed that they'd be willing to continue that work, and they can certainly speak to that here. And we were, we're going to bring that report back to CCEC when COVID happened. And we have not met since then. I've asked for permission for this work group to meet probably for the last six to eight weeks, and it has not been authorized. But as far as I'm concerned, this work group is absolutely still alive. I don't think there's any legislative action that has dissolved it. And I'm, I guess, a little surprised to hear that there's any concern about this referral.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Furman.
Thank you, Mayor. On October fifteenth, the council did adopt Legistar File five seven five one zero with, with the text that does actually say, now there be resolved. The Common Council extends the deadline for finishing the work of the President's Work Group to review Council Communication Tools and Processes to be no later than March thirty-first, twenty twenty. I understand what Alder Foster is saying, that, you know, the committee wishes to continue. But the council, this council did pass legislation that made it, at least as far as, you know, I'm reading it, you know, clear that, that there was a deadline for finishing the work. And so if that committee's going to continue, obviously, the council would need to extend it based on that legislation. I'd recommend, and I'd be curious, Attorney May could tell me the process for this, that we just remove that referral. There's certainly an opportunity to change that at CCEC, you know, based on the dates. But it just seems, at least in, in my opinion, the explanation I've gotten, inappropriate to refer to a committee that at this time doesn't exist.
Well, I, I, I think I, I agree with you that the council should probably, if it wants the committee to continue to work, put in another extension. I, I guess there is the extenuating circumstance that I hadn't considered here, that a lot of committees had to quit doing work in March. And presumably, this committee, like others, might have come back to the council and asked for an extension. But things were rather, things were rather difficult in March. What I would suggest at this, Alder, instead is leave the referral on there. If the council does not extend that time, then there's no committee for it to go to. And if they do want to extend the time, that could be taken up at CCEC, and an appropriate resolution be suggested to the council.
It would be my preference for that referral not to be there and for it to be discussed at CCEC. So if I'd like to go that route, what would be the best way, Attorney May, to go that route?
Then you would move to, well, I guess you would object to the referral. And the, the motion was to include the referral, so you would vote against it.
Okay.
I think the proper motion in front of the body right now is to add this referral. And if you don't think that's proper, then you would vote against it and urge your colleagues to do the same.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Morland.
I guess my question is, thank you, Mayor. I guess my question is, what would be the effect of referring this to the work group? I'm a member of the work group, and as Alder Foster indicated, we did agree that we would try to get our deadline extended to continue the work and the priorities that we'd established. But what would be the effect of doing this? Because this looks more like an HR finance issue rather than any, any confirmation that this committee or recommendation that this committee would be bringing forward. So if, if I'm incorrect with it, please, please correct me.
Alder Morland, is that a question?
It's a question, I, I guess for Alder, for Alder Foster. I mean, I, I don't mind us talking about it. We have actually talked about the different PIOs and, and placement and so forth. And this is something that's come up, which I thought we were in agreement that, you know, we would support that. But I'm wondering if the way this is written, it seems as if it's just reclassifying a position and the department of the position, not necessarily any process that this particular committee would be working on. So I guess I'm asking for clarification from Alder Foster.
Thank you, Alder. You're correct in your interpretation of the item. It is, in fact, creating a position and, or taking an existing position and moving it into a different department. It does not speak to work plan or function or anything like that. But Alder Foster is in the queue and will presumably speak to your question when we get there. Alder Baldi.
So I was going to ask Attorney May whether or not it is possible to introduce a resolution in the fly. So that at least if Foster and others know when their job will be done with regard to this committee, I mean, we can introduce a resolution that we can vote on now and say we are extending that committees existing to a certain period of time in the future. Is that something that can be done on the fly? I mean, I don't see really the problem of leaving this referral on it. The fact that the attorney says if at some point the mandate is not extended, then the referral has no place to go. But I would like to know if that is doable, and if it is doable, I'd like to know what Foster and his team think about when their work can be done. So we can, this would be such something just to extend their committee time.
What you could do, Alder, you were another Alder at the end of the meeting, where there's the opportunity to introduce items from the floor. You could introduce, say, perhaps a resolution by title only to extend the deadline for this committee. Then between now and the next council meeting, put the language in there on the resolution, and you could adopt it at that meeting. You can't take any action tonight. It was not on the agenda. The most you can do is introduce something for a referral and, and probably by title only, because you don't have the exact language ready.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Alder.
Foster, if you are, we can talk, and if you're interested in that, or if you want to speak generally now. I don't know what the process is with regards to that.
And thank you, Alder. Thank you, Alder. Alder Foster. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thank you. So I guess just, there were a couple of questions out there. So one, you know, I, I have as much information as the rest of you in terms of item 52. As I read it, it is a reclassification from what was an I T specialist three position to a new position of communications coordinator in the mayor's office. My understanding that this is in line with something that the mayor had been considering in terms of a, I think it had been discussed before, a kind of lead P I O position. My assumption is that this is, is that position or something very similar. In our, to, to speak to Alder Morland's questions, you know, she alluded to this has been a significant conversation within the work group. Our, we established priority areas for the communication work group that we reviewed and updated at almost every meeting. And we, as part of that, had an outline for our final report and recommendations. And this was one of the key items that we were expecting to take up and to provide a recommendation on. It's, it can be found in Legistar Item 58971. And it's Item 7C4 that says input into city communication structure slash lead P I O slash engagement position. I had spoke with the mayor about this, probably November, December of last year. She asked me to reach out to Mary Batari to talk further about it. I reached out to Mary Batari on multiple occasions, who said that she would get back to me. My expectation is that this would be an item that we would be reviewing within the communications work group. And so this, again, seems very straightforward for me that it would be referred to that body. I do have, I guess, one question for Attorney May regarding action that's needed. So based on the item that Alder Furman referenced, it does say it's extending the deadline for the report. Would your interpretation be then that that, that legislative action functionally dissolves the work group? Or is there, is there not some other legislative action that's required? In other words, do we need to have a new resolution that keeps the work group alive? Or would, would a resolution really simply extend the deadline for a final report, which is how I'm reading it?
In, in my view, if you extend the deadline for the final report, you effectively keep the committee alive. It's, it's, it's kind of an existential question as to where the committee is when the deadline for the report is passed, but they haven't done the report. And there have been instances in the past where those deadlines have been seen as sort of strong suggestions, but they allow people to go past them. The better practice, of course, is to pass a resolution that formally extends the deadline. So in, in my view, it's, it's not out there right now, but if you extend the deadline, it would spring back to life. I guess would be the way I interpret it. That's the best way to put it in technical legal terms.
Great. And maybe when we're done with this item, if I could get some support to introduce such an item from the floor as you suggested and perhaps, oh, yeah. I guess I'm not sure if it's really the best way to go about that and to get that to happen.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Martin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I first have a question, if it's okay of, of you. I was wondering how urgent this hire is.
Thank you, Alder. So perhaps a little bit of background is useful here. This is a position that the council created before I was elected to be the quote citywide P I O. It was, for reasons I'm not really sure about, decided to put it in I T. Having talked to our I T director, she does not desire it to be in I T and would rather that it be in my office. I agreed with that early on and it just hadn't risen to the level of us taking action to move it, you know, until now. And it has actually now become rather urgent that we fill this position because we have, as you may have noticed, some rather urgent things to communicate about as a city. And we, it is the, the lack of this position and whoever will fill it has been felt deeply, I think, over the last three months. As the E O C and the J C, the Joint Information Center, have struggled to put together communications plans on the fly and to really iron out the issues with our language access and translation and to up our game on social media, all in service of getting the word out about public health issues, guidelines for residents and businesses, best practices and where to find the best information. And so if I could turn the clock back, I would wish that I had prioritized this move right away when I came into office so that we would have had this person hired and onboard before the pandemic started. Of course, that's not possible. So we've been trying to move this change in, in where the position sits as quickly as possible through the process so that we can post the position. And now Alder Foster referred to the desire to consult on the position. And I believe that that is a desire to consult on the position description and the work plan. I don't want to speak for the Alder, but not, not the, the actual whether the position exists or not and, and where it sits. And we have, absolutely are willing to consult on the position description and the posting and certainly on the work plan with whatever work group, but I think more importantly with C C E C. But we really do need to make this change in the, you know, where the position sits so that we can even post the position and begin to hire, you know, begin the hiring process and get somebody on board. So that's a very long way to say, Alder, that it is actually rather urgent that we get somebody and that anything we can do to expedite that is really much appreciated. And I understand that what we're doing tonight, of course, is just simply introducing the proposal to be voted on in June, which frankly feels like ages away at this point and will likely mean that we don't have anybody on board until July or August, which is giving me hives to think about. But so it goes and, you know, I take the blame for not moving this earlier. But I, it is, you know, it is a really urgent need. And I think that the, the folks in the J C would agree with me that having not just the extra capacity, but somebody who has the ability to lead the city's communications efforts is a really critical need right now.
Thank you. Am I still allowed to speak right now or do I need to jump back in?
No, go right ahead.
Thank you. I also want to thank you, Madam Mayor, for bringing up how this position came about. If I remember correctly, this was part of the 2019 budget. And that was, that, this was one of, something that I kind of worked on a bit in that particular budget. We, by then, by the time the budget process started, we were really reeling from the, the floods of August 20th. The flooding on the Isthmus, flooding, flash flooding that happened all over the place on the west side of the city. And it really appeared that our, our communications were haphazard and we were, they were not organized or coordinated in any way. And that made it a lot harder to work with constituents in particular who were getting information from engineering, were getting information from public health and, and all of this in a not the most organized fashion. And so then I had to, you know, try to figure out what it was that they needed, who they needed to talk to when a, a citywide public, public information officer would have been able to coordinate messages better and, and make things less confusing for our constituents. Also, but as part of that discussion, we did have quite, quite lively debates about where this position should be or placed. And it was versus, or it was the I T department versus the mayor's office. And so it was kind of ended up being in I T. So, you know, I really, oh, can we hear me?
Yes.
Am I here still?
You froze for a moment.
Okay, okay. My internet is not doing great right now. So, you know, I, I very much understand the urgency and the hives that you're getting right now because they're kind of bothering me too. This item really is a, a human resources reclassification and not really part of the purview of the particular work group. And then to top it off, the, that despite the intentions of the committee and, and extending, you know, it, it did expire and we, we do need to reinstate it with a new deadline for the report. I mean, that's been something that, that any committee that I've been on that has, has had a final report and a deadline, we had to go back to the council to get extensions and also kind of check, check in with the body to make sure that, you know, that we were still proceeding and making good progress. And I would also like to note that this is going to C C E C and the finance committee. So this is not just something that is going willy nilly checked and, and in a non-transparent way. I think that the urgency and the fact that this committee doesn't really exist right now, we should vote down this referral and get it moving quick. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bedar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I see Deputy Mayor McWay has his hands up, so I will just pose a question to Deputy Mayor McWay. I know he has been working on this issue of a city Y P I O. So Deputy Mayor McWay, would you like to speak at this point to the urgency of this position?
Deputy Mayor, I think you have to unmute yourself on your end as well.
There you go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, well, thank you, Alder. I mean, the, probably the greatest challenge we have is not with respect to messaging independent departments and what they have to say, but coordinating that messaging across all of departments and having more strategy behind our, excuse me, behind our communication efforts.
Thank you.
Alder?
Yeah, can I speak?
Please.
On the item. I appreciate the conversation around the referral. I do also feel a great sense of urgency for this position. Some of us actually have had a conversation about the citywide P I O going back a couple of budgets back with discussions about the need for, for such P I O. I do not think that there is more important time than now, especially as we move into our forward day phase processes than having a good citywide strategy around communication and at least a person that, that can be that person that we ask to work with as a council around that strategy. So I would hope that we will have a introduction from the floor to extend the work of the work group and that they will be the work group that will work on, again, the strategy, the work that actually we would like to, to see as part of this P I O position, a long-term coming position for the city. But I don't think that the time is now to slow it down in, as it goes through, again, a pretty kind of process of, of going to C C E C and finance for the reclass of the position. I think the important work is to really make sure that we have this work group dig deep into what strategies we would like to see used. How is that strategy going to really come together with all their communication and our need to, to make sure that we have good, clear and strategic communication with our constituents? So again, I, I, I think that we, we can move forward with the reclass, make sure that, again, there is an introduction from the floor to extend the deadline for the work group. But the referral right now seems to only slow things down at a time where we really need to move forward with one piece of the process, which is the reclass.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Morland.
I, I don't have a problem with the work group taking a look at this and being a part of maybe this structure. But the actual work group was, my understanding is the actual work group was set up to improve upon the way that council members communicated with constituents. And in doing so, we had to gather all the information as to how people were receiving information currently, which is why the P I Os came in. I think that this is separate from our group. It, it's a part of it, but it's not something that I think we should have a tremendous amount of input in. It's just another piece of the communications puzzle that we need to take a look at as we look at how we as council people will communicate in the tools that we have in the processes so that it's not redundant. So I, you know, I don't have a problem if we get this extended for the work group to incorporate this and all the other information that we have. But as far as it being a necessity going forward in order to get this reclass done, I don't see that being needed.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Lemmer. Alder Lemmer. You might have to unmute on your side, Alder.
I don't know why it keeps defaulting to that. Thank you. I agree, this role is obviously very urgent and I don't think it makes sense to delay classifying it. And I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, maybe it would give the, the work assurance and peace of mind to just know that, you know, part of the, this role would be engaging with Alders, including the work group and making sure that, you know, our communication needs and priorities are being listened to and taken into account. So I'm, I'm wondering if there is, like, if the P D for this has been developed already and if we can, you know, just have assurance that that is in there? And, and maybe that would make, like, everyone feel, you know, more comfortable?
Thank you, Alder. I don't believe we have a final position description yet, but it is being worked on. And it, it is certainly my intention that this would be a citywide communications person and that would certainly include the council.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rommel.
Thank you, Mayor. Is this, it's a point of order. This is under introduction of new business for referral without debate. And I know the debate is whether we should refer it or not, but it seems like it's steering off into strategy and urgency and coordination with Alders. So I just want to remind us that the question is whether it should be referred to this work group. You know, as part of the discussion, not the bigger, I mean, it's an important topic that we could all discuss, but this is not the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. You're correct that the, the matter before us is the question of referral. President Carter.
Thank you. I was just going to say the same thing that we need to, I was going to call the question on whether we are going to refer it or not because that's what the recommendation is.
Thank you, President Carter. There's only one more Alder in the queue.
That's fine.
Thank you, President Carter.
Madam.
Alder Martin.
Here we go. I started talking too early. Thank you, guys. I would like to move a substitute to introduce this with no referral to the, to the, the president's work group on communications.
Alder, so just to clarify, the motion is to introduce referrals to finance and C C E C? I'm seeing a nod, yes. Okay. And is there a second on that motion? I see you, Attorney May. Alder Furman, is that a second?
Yes.
Right. Thank you. Attorney May would like to advise us. Go ahead, Attorney May. Go ahead, Attorney May.
I would suggest that the motion's improper. It's essentially the negative of the motion that's already on the floor. So if if you vote no on the Foster's motion to make this referral, then what's left is the referral to finance and C C E C, which I think is what Alder Martin wanted to have happen. So normally, under Roberts' rules, if there's a motion pending, you can't make the opposite motion and you just vote against the one that's on the floor.
Thank you, Attorney May. So if the motion succeeds, the action is clear. If the motion fails, we need another motion to introduce?
I don't I don't believe so. It's on the agenda for introduction and nobody objected to introduction or anything else. So the only action, the only the only action that was suggested was a motion to add an additional referral. If that fails, I don't think you need to move to introduce.
Okay.
But but if so.
I defer to your greater knowledge of the rules. President Carter.
I was just getting ready. Yes, Attorney May is right. I won't go through the whole thing I was going to say, but yes.
Thank you, President Carter. And Alder Hennick.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I support the referral to the president's work group. I think that it makes a lot of sense and it's within purview. There's a, you know, we've got the T F O G recommendations of really looking at any positions that we're adding to the mayor's office. So I just, I think it's good to have an extra set of eyes. And I think that saying that the work group doesn't exist because of issues with the pandemic and not being allowed to meet is doesn't work for me. So I would support it getting referred to there. And I'd just like to make sure that we reiterate what the motion before us is before we start voting. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other Alders in the queue, so I will reiterate the motion. The motion before us is to introduce and to refer to finance, C C E C and the president's work group on communication tools. And I can't remember the rest of the proper name of it. And Attorney May. You're still, I think, muted on your end, Attorney May.
There you go. We got it fixed. Mayor, I think the motion was simply to add the referral. So there are, it already is on the agenda to be introduced and referred to finance and C C E C. And as I understand what Alder Foster suggested was simply to add the one further referral. So that's the only matter that's before the council.
All right, I stand corrected. The motion is to add a referral.
Makes sense.
The impact of a yes vote is the item will be referred to the extra committee. The impact of a no vote is that it will not be referred to that committee. And is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the motion, Alder Furman?
I'd like a real call.
Thank you, Alder Furman. So again, the motion is to add the additional referral. And all those in favor, I, those opposed, no. As your name is called, I will unmute you all and the clerk will call the roll.
Alder Foster?
Aye.
Alder Foster, aye. Alder Furman?
No.
Alder Furman, no. Alder Harrington McKinney?
No.
Alder Harrington McKinney, no. Alder Heck?
Aye.
Alder Heck, aye. Alder Hennick?
Aye.
Alder Hennick, aye. Alder Campbell?
Aye.
Alder Campbell, aye. Alder Lemmer? Alder Lemmer?
Alder Lemmer is muted and possibly frozen?
No.
Alder Lemmer, no. Alder Martin?
No.
Alder Martin, no. Alder Morland?
No.
Alder Morland, no. Alder Prestajacamo?
Aye.
Alder Prestajacamo, aye. Alder Rumel?
Aye.
Alder Rumel, aye. Alder Skidmore?
Aye.
Alder Skidmore, aye. Alder Tierney?
No.
Alder Tierney, no. Alder Vervier?
Aye.
Alder Vervier, aye. Alder Abbas?
Aye.
Alder Abbas, aye. Alder Alboras?
Aye.
Alder Alboras, aye. Alder Balde?
Alder Balde, you're muted.
Alder Balde?
Aye. I was trying to mute myself, but I couldn't.
Alder Balde, aye. Alder Biddar?
No.
Alder Biddar, no. Alder Carter?
I'm doing a vote right now, so just come in.
Alder Carter?
What? Aye.
Alder Carter, aye. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Alder Evers, aye. Thirteen ayes, seven noes.
Thirteen ayes, seven noes. The referral is added. Alder Biddar. Oh.
I would like to make an introduction from the floor.
Go ahead, Alder. Sorry, Alder, give me one second here. Go ahead, Alder Biddar.
Sorry. So an introduction from the floor to extend the deadline for the report and recommendations of the president's work group to review communication tools and processes to September 30th of 2020. And I will entertain any other dates that anybody wants to change that with.
All right, there's a motion. President Carter, is that a second?
That is a second, and I have a friendly amendment. I don't know if I T is going to think it's friendly, but I have a friendly amendment to that. My, I want to add that the work group meets before the council meeting on the 16th in order for us to stay on track. I don't know if that's legal.
Although I don't think it's proper for the motion, but to reassure us all, I believe that council staff are being trained next week in type two meetings and so should be able to stand up a meeting of the work group in time. It might be a little tight. But I think for the the motion, we're doing an introduction by title only from the floor. It's been moved and seconded by Alder Biddar and President Carter.
Then I'll leave it alone.
Thank you, President Carter. And Attorney May wishes to advise.
I suggest you add a referral. I think you wanted to come back to the council meeting on June 2nd based on the exigencies.
There's any objection from the body to that? Alder Foster, is that an objection?
Well, I was going to recommend adding a referral to C C E C since that's been the body that's been overseeing and coordinating this work.
I don't have a calendar in front of me. Is it possible for it to go to C C E C and back to the six two council meeting?
Right. Same. Yes, because it meets the same evening. So there would be a recommendation from the floor of C C E C.
Alder Foster, anything additional?
Absolutely.
All right. So just so we're all clear, the motion is to introduce from the floor by title only an item that would extend the work group's deadline to September 30th. And the item will be referred to C C E C and the council meeting of six two. All right. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor, Alder Hennick?
I was just, I had a point of order. Did we finish the motion? We got the amendment, but we didn't vote on the underlying motion, did we?
According to Attorney May, all we needed to do was vote on the referral.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. And so is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the introduction from the floor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of the introduction from the floor. Are there any other introductions from the floor? Seeing none. Alder Morland.
I move to adjourn.
President Carter.
A happy birthday to our two favorite Alders, Mike Bavir and Donna Morland. Happy birthday.
And a second to adjourn.
And a second to adjourn, yes.
Thank you, President Carter. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adjournment? Seeing none. Thank you all, and we are adjourned.